I'd like to welcome everyone to the Wilton Community School District, Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, 5:30 PM. School board meeting. Mission of the Wilton Community School District is to provide an education that encourages continual progress through the improvement of one's abilities, expansion of one's interests and knowledge, and the growth of one's character. All right, Joy, call to order roll call, please. Tim Barrett.
Here.
Linda Duncan.
Here.
Tom Fitzer.
Here.
Rob Metzger.
Here.
Tara Oing. All right, thank you, Joy. Any agenda approval? Any additions, changes, or corrections, Mr. Burnett?
None.
All right.
Would you approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, let's go to the minute approval. Minutes approval. We're doing February 8th regular meeting, February 13th joint meeting with the City Council and [inaudible].
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. Recognition.
Hey, we got a little press from Saturday. Boys and girls teams and record-breaking year all over the place. Coach, coaches are here. Dakota, um, Argra Lamak and Mr. Gabe Bourne and the coaches, Joe Hewitt.
You guys come play so they don't have to turn around.
That's right. You gotta give us your best five to seven minutes, so you can do it.
[inaudible]. I don't know which one's which. That's the, that's the one that's there. There you go. There, there, there. Trophies move on. They're right there. Just something to see the wonderful hardware you guys.
Right, Coach Bourne, you want to talk a little about your season and some of the, an individual accomplishment?
Yes, absolutely. Um, so I'm actually going to turn this over to Coach Lamak first as the girls finish up their season first. Before we get into that, um, I will say we went from one female wrestler on our wrestling team last season to 24, seven through 12 this year.
Awesome.
Uh, which was a great problem to have, but also, boy, we scrambled since. I didn't expect that quite of a jump. But with that being said, at the high school level, I'll let Coach Lamak, uh, who we so lovingly got on board this year, uh, take over quickly.
Yeah, so it was a great season. Wrestling is such a different sport than any other sport that, um, girls can participate in. So, um, there's a lot of learning to do in a very short amount of time. Um, I think Coach Shane Bourne and I discussed, it was like seven or eight years worth of like knowledge jammed into the months. So these girls did a, a great job of just being sponges and taking in everything and always asking questions when they had questions. And, um, it was just a really great, successful year. Some injuries, right, stopped, um, a couple athletes from participating for a majority of the season, but it was still great that they stayed on board with us and stayed committed to the team. Uh, we had three girls make it to the state tournament. It's fantastic to have, especially for year one. Um, and two of the girls, it was their first season ever wrestling. Um, so we had Hannah Rogers got second place. Kayden Torm got eighth place. And then Kylie, our lone senior, uh, didn't place, but she, um, had a, had a great experience at the state tournament. And we're, we're looking forward to next year and our numbers are only going to go up. So we're excited for that.
And so they really kicked off our postseason run as the way everything's scheduled out this year with, girls started a couple weeks earlier than us for the, than the boys. And then we jumped into postseason for the boys. Uh, and this crew, which is most of them present, uh, finished season with just shy of 30, um, boys in the room. And we made a mark on the year, that's for sure. Uh, as a dual team throughout the season, we garnered a little bit of respect, uh, taken on, taken out a few teams and earned our way to the state dual tournament, uh, for the second year in a row and made quite a jump from last year's performance to this year's finishing state runner-ups. Um, only losing to Bosco, which still hurts a little bit. But they did a phenomenal job there at the state dual tournament. And then the way it was set up this year actually was really well for us and our individuals as we got done with our, considered our team portion of it. Uh, and we jumped into our individual aspects and those individual goals that our wrestlers have, um, focusing on those 14 that are in the varsity lineup, but which still required most of our team to stay in the room and be a part of there for partnerships and practices and getting everybody prepared for their postseason run. And, uh, oh yeah, sorry, duels, they finished 27 and 1, um, with our only duel loss obviously coming in the state finals. Then along that way this season, they did, until the state dual tournament, they had won every tournament and every duel that they had been a part of this season. Uh, so that made that one sting a little bit more too, knowing that we had what we needed to be there. We just came up a little bit short, but it also kept some of our individuals hungry as we ran into that, their individual postseason. We hosted districts, um, week after that and qualified a record-setting, uh, 10 wrestlers, 10 out of 14 in the lineup for the state tournament. And in route to that, I guess they just wanted to keep breaking records. Um, and we got eight of those 10 on the podium out at the state tournament, uh, finishing second as traditional team. It's the first year since 2002 that we have brought home two trophies in one season. Fortunately, it was also my senior year. Now, we've had some arguments on which team was better. My senior year, we got first and third. This year, we got second and second. I don't know. Either way, we're extremely proud of these guys and what they did, uh, this year and it's only going to get better. Uh, we've got the accomplishments along the way. We've had 100-win, uh, season out of our 100 career wins out of Hagan, 150 out of Brody, 150 out of Kayden. Kayden also surpassing his dad with 100 pins out of his 159 wins now. So it's quite an accomplishment throughout his career. Uh, we do lose some stellar seniors, uh, especially with our heavyweight Kaufman, who, second-year wrestler in our room and not only qualified for the state tournament, but finished fifth at the state tournament. Um, and so we had, there is. I mean, if you guys want to learn more, come Sunday afternoon to our banquet. It'd be great. Um, we got a whole lot to talk about for this year, but saying we're proud is an understatement. Uh, definitely, all this hardware has definitely earned through that wonderful adage of blood, sweat, and tears. And now unfortunately, Brody may, may get shed a few more tears from time to time, but, uh, blood and sweat was there too.
Now he's always there to break them up.
Yes, yes. Now we're going to miss Trey next year because somebody else is going to have to step in. Uh, but, long story long, yes, phenomenal season put on by these guys. And definitely as coach, couldn't be more proud and just blessed to be a part of it.
Very good. You guys have any questions for the crew, any of that stuff? Talk about the girls. I mean, are they going to have a conference sermon for the girls next year? How's that looking as it grows?
So as we look into next season, right now, I think we've got four, four quads lined up anyways for our girls. And with our numbers that we had right now in junior high, coming up to the high school, I know we'll be able to definitely fill a few more spots in the lineup and need a few of the girls to grow, same as the boys, uh, to help continue to fill a few more spots in those lineups. But there are, at least within the RBC Conference, um, we are scheduling out some girls' duel meets again. This year, we were able to try to slate something with West Liberty and we're going to continue the same next year, uh, in that aspect. But trying to get into that dual, uh, portion for the girls too, as soon as we can kind of fill that team and keep going from there. And then as of right now, they're going to still kind of run the same schedule-ish with the exception of, I think regionals will look different next year because it was far bigger than what they thought. They went from, from girls across the state. We started the season with four regionals that were supposed to happen. But then once they showed up like they did, everybody eager to wrestle. We, when regionals came around, we actually had eight regional tournaments across the state. Uh, we went from a little over 1,000 female wrestlers, uh, registered in track wrestling to this year is three, about 3,100 wrestlers across the state. So, I mean, you know, you build it, they'll come and, boy, open the doors when they got sanctioned and girls are taking advantage of it. And it's an awesome thing to be a part of, that's for sure.
That's great. Coach Bourne and Coach Hewitt and their staff were also named the one A Coaches of the Year.
Oh, yes.
And I'm really proud that everybody in their area recognized what these gentlemen bring to Wilton, Iowa. Great to have them on our staff.
Totally. Any other questions? Because their arms are getting tired. They have a [inaudible].
Who's gained the most weight since wrestling?
I don't know.
How much?
22.
Oh my God.
I'm so ashamed.
Oh, wow.
They're going to help readjust the lineup next year.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Yeah. Come back next year with a better twin. We want twins next year. They just, they'll stay running around.
Summer body.
I'll take him down.
Do you want to run?
Here. I'll take him. Oh, yeah. Gear turn-in was yesterday, by the way.
I still have my spare shirt.
Here.
Yeah, I was at a wrestling practice.
Next year, Bourne.
Pause on Angela. Yeah, I was at a wrestling.
Who's got the other one? Oh, Coach?
First. Yep. Ready? Yep. Go ahead, please. All right.
Actually, it's pretty self-explanatory. Lots going on. Probably our biggest focus next week, this week is parent teacher conferences. Next week, another week we have our lighthouse certification visit, which I think I also attached the agenda. It's, you know, it's been a long time coming and we've got a lot of people that put a lot of work in and we have received another request for someone to come visit us, which is always, you know, really nice because it reminds you of kind of where we were and how far. You just forget because it was a slow process. So, um, I'm really proud of our kids and our teachers. And I believe we will hit lighthouse status pretty easily. But, so we're excited about that. On the 15th, we have three people coming from later in me. Um, New Kindergarten Day is the 17th and we are pushing 70. I think we're at 67 right now, so, um, that should be pretty strong now. A couple of, you know, sometimes they decide after New Kindergarten Day to stay in preschool. But.
What's our kindergarten class size this year? I recall. I can look it up. I have it.
I don't know. We're all about 70. We're close to 70, if you think about that. Do they have 24? I don't know.
I don't know. I was 65, but I can recall. I mean, it, well, what was it on Cal Day versus?
I have.
That's one way to do it too.
We always tend to pick up three to five.
Yeah, we're right. Of course, yeah. What's it say, Tommy?
Uh.
Yeah, what's it say?
So for.
Look at the board. 64.
65.
And I'm going to guess we'll get a couple.
What do I have projected next year?
67.
Okay, so we hit the production.
Yes.
Um, family night, kids' family night was great again. Hosted way more students and families than we had prior. Um, and I listed some of the sessions. It was, it was a lot of fun. It was good, very good. Chess club, Jamie Caffrey started chess club after spring break for fourth through sixth graders. It's always a hit. AFCD, we're sending a crew that I've listed there at the end of March through the donation of the Townsend's. They don't support that effort and it's a great learning opportunity for our teachers. And Holly Pearl is going to join our team Monday as a parish kid. Yeah, there you go. Questions?
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Austin, you're free. You can go.
I'm out. Not out, I'm over.
Guarantee for Thomas.
That's why I'm based off coming here because of that. Thanks, guys. Bye, Miss. See you soon. All right. All right, well, um, we had a very busy month around here. Um, lots of, uh, extracurriculars. I, I think that was like our peak month of everything under the sun happened in the month of February around here. And, and it was fabulous because honestly, Wilton really, we did well everywhere. Um, very proud of our kids. First time, um, we sent, uh, a, a group to jazz competition and they, they did well. At first, we were just going to go for comments because we've never done it before. And then they decided to go ahead and go for a ranking and we got a two. It's not, you know, it's, it's still excellent. It's not superior, but it's excellent for our first year. That's amazing. So I was really excited. We're sending a group to state small group this, excuse me, this Saturday, and we're going to participate in state large group, uh, first weekend in May. So our band and choir programs are starting to, um, shift and come around a little bit. So I'm really excited about that. We survived junior high dance, so it's fine. I mean, it took more.
Dressed up though. It was, uh, it was pretty formal.
Oh, no, some of the kids, they looked nice. It was, it was fine. Actually, it's always kind of fun. They're, they're kind of fun. Um, we interviewed for science. We have, um, well, now we'll have another science position open, but I do have, uh, another candidate that I'm trying to, uh, have join us. Um, but we have one position filled already. And then our second candidate, um, uh, her husband is also a teacher and is looking for a job around here. So if we can help out with that, then we'll land another very highly qualified science teacher. So I'm excited about that. So our positions are kind of like falling into place. Nicole Miller, uh, is going to transfer down to eighth grade E L A, English Language Arts. And really, um, we're looking to strengthen, um, really the skill sets of reading and writing in the junior high and to make that transition to that high school writing piece, um, of all kinds of writing, not just, um, academic writing. We know that we need that, so this will be a great way to build upon that. And then, um, we've already had internal candidates apply for Ms. Miller's position. So it'll be interesting, but we'll have some, we're going to have some fun, add in some new things here for next year. Um, I did put a lot, kind of a big blurb about our, our Beaver Basics program. I think we're seeing, uh, we still, you know, like every week I run, um, I run an algorithm and it, and it tells us like who's our like top 15, top 10 to watch in the building. It's very consistent, which seems kind of interesting. And, and it kind of fits exactly what, what we've seen with Beaver Basics. We have, um, you know, a very, you know, 5% if that many who are really intense, need a lot of support just in life in general. And then everybody else kind of falls, you know, got some here and there. And then we have some kids, lots of kids, that have never even received any kind of, you know, any kind of disciplinary action. So that's, to me, is really good data to share with the staff to go like, it's not everybody. We have, you know, a small group of intense kids and now we have partnered with some outside agencies to get more support. It's not just in academics. We're, um, you know, doing that, but we, to our best of our ability on staff, are helping with the social, emotional needs. But, you know, if we're going to repeat Beaver Basics again, we know that we need some more support and working with the families to get that. So, um, you know, it's not perfect, but I think I'm very, I'm very proud of our staff. If it weren't for them and, and their work on this, it wouldn't have taken off. And I think, um, I think it's been pretty, definitely has been successful in at least getting us a really good number of baseline data of know where, how, when, what we, you know, what needs to be filled in, especially just even in instruction. Because if we're not teaching kids how to walk down hallways correctly or what kind of language is appropriate in a setting like a school, then that's, that's what we need to add to our curriculum.
So on that, real quick, can you just give me a quick, doesn't have to be, you know, just a quick description of what, uh, majors compared to minors?
Sure.
Just, you know?
Yeah, so our minors might be things like dyslipidus word in class. But a major would be you called somebody at, at work. That's a difference.
Good.
Uh, a minor would be you're messing around, not, you're on your computer and not following along what the teacher says and they see you. Minor. Um, major, um, would be you put your hands on somebody or stole something. You were outright disrespected, disrespectful to a staff member. Those are majors. So, and we have them categorized, so the staff knows where things fall. But we hadn't tracked, um, la, you know, prior to this. So now we actually have tracked and we know, um, how, how many of these we're seeing. And, and still where our biggest behaviors are still going to be, um, in the minor category, it's still going to be language. In our major, it's still disrespect to staff, number one. So still have to work on that. But at least everybody, you know, it's out front. Everybody knows, staff knows, we all know. And, um, we all know what we need. And, and I've got to tell you though, there is like a thing in, there's a stigma in high school. They do not want to go to Beaver Kids. They do not.
Good.
And I'm only at two high schools. Two high school kids.
Yes.
And, and people stop and go like, where am I? I need to know. How many more? And then I have to go. And I'm like, so they know their number and they're like, hmm, I'll show you. I don't want to do that. So.
That's good.
Yeah, it's like something, like I don't want to be one that's doing that. So, um, and I, I put an update about the greenhouse. It's, it's coming alive. It's coming alive. Uh, we've got, we've had two Saturdays where people came in and really did a lot of work. And I listed kind of the things that have been going on and the things that we're ordering. So, um, we hopefully are going to have plants alive in there by the end of the spring that we can all come down and maybe purchase. So, um, it's, it's exciting. And we did go and visit a few other places to see what they had so we can kind of compare. I'm just excited because now my science teachers, I'm going to meet with them coming up because they're, um, thinking about adding ways too to start utilizing the greenhouse. Maybe, uh, some kind of botany or, um, plants partnering with Ag on Plant Science and learning how to, um, is it cross, cross-pollinate? Yeah. We're reading on that later. So we think we can even step it up and add some kind of layers to that. So I'm excited about that. And then last but not least, I can't wait to hear from the Japanese club and our joy of what that trip's going to be like. I am so excited. I just can't wait. 10 days. Which, how cool is that?
I agree.
That we have a Japanese club and they're going to go to Japan. I just get goosebumps when I think about it. And I'm so excited for the kids because they're really, they're, they're fun kids. They're going to really, uh, they're going to make the most of it and be the time of their life. It's going to be, and you're going to have, because that is a fun group of kids. Like you're going to laugh till you melt, I think. So I'm very excited for you.
Well, they can present all of us.
Yes, I'd like to. Oh, yes, we want to hear.
Joy, share what you know how to say in Japanese.
How to say hello. What is iwa?
Chiba?
Konichiwa.
Konichiwa.
Very, I just can't wait.
One more word I know.
Yeah.
I'm sure the kids know more than that.
Well, I, I do. Studying and stuff, but. But now we buckle up because we're going to head into that fourth quarter. And here we go, it's senior time. It's, and yeah, and we're doing scholarships and, um, and I'm, I'm excited. We still don't have the, um, MCC shared position of the career and, um, career counseling position. But, um, I think Mr. Patterson and Mrs. Wickley have, have really, have been trying to really step up and help. But I'm laughing because I'm getting emails from students on the weekends about scholarships and, and I'm forwarding whatever I can find too for them. And I feel like I've written more, um, recommendations this year than I did last year, but they know me better too, so there's that. But, um, I think that the kids that want to go for it, and, and we have a new, a couple new scholarships available for kids particularly that maybe aren't your 4.0, but want to, um, want to go into maybe a trade or a skill kind of thing. And you'd be, a lot of kids interested in, in that as well. And that's an area with the scholarships and the, um, we want to bring back the job shadow internship portion of the life skills class of seniors and kind of put that into, back into the curriculum. COVID's over, let's send them back out, let's start partnering. And, uh, we just put a committee together today and we're starting to meet to redesign life skills for next year. We're doing a couple other things too. We want to do a transitional, um, program for seventh graders, transitioning from six to seven and then also from eighth to ninth. So we're really looking at those skills and what we can do to help them. I think it is overwhelming for them when they go from being in one classroom or maybe two, um, into different, changing every 20, you know, hour and 20 minutes in those organizational skills. Uh, if you see our list of seventh graders that haven't gotten work in on time, you know that it's, we just really, there's an issue. We've got to help them, teach them how to be organized and meet deadlines, which for some reason this generation, I think they're suggestions. So, I know, they do. But, you know, but that's on us. We can teach them and, um, I would say though, that I think the kids have been really good lately.
Ooh, adults are doing really good.
Um, so I know they're cranky, they're ready for spring break, but man, I'm really enjoying them lately. So we're doing, we're doing okay here. Questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Off we go. We'll talk later.
Yep.
Set in it with the science team, but.
You can call me later.
Okay.
That'd be fun.
Great. All right. Because I have an idea.
All right, very good.
All right, guys, thanks.
Thanks, Sue.
We will shift back to Angela, please. Thank you.
All right, upload number four, taxation funds. There's nothing to report on any of the funds. Everything increased except for general fund, uh, a decrease there. But, um, we had an 18% increase in our expenditures in our purchase services area, so.
Who would be in that group? Like an example?
And, uh, any open enrollments, Millie? It's a purchase service. Yeah, anybody that does any kind of service for us. There's, there's, there's three different categories. It's 300s, 400s, 500s. I know that doesn't mean anything to you, um, but I can give you a breakdown of what those sections are.
You're good.
Okay. All right. ISP is upload five. We have, um, our balance is down just above 100,000. So I am, uh, keeping in close contact with a few of the areas, mainly our, our maintenance department because Andy's going to be cutting it close with, with his budget. So, um, but you know, we've had things pop up. Boiler pipe, that was $6,000 that we weren't expecting. Yeah, you know, it's maintenance. It's hard to budget that area. Upload six is self-insurance. Of course, as always, our balance looks fine there. Upload seven is latch key. And, um, I have met with Ann and we have kind of put our rates together next year and we both feel comfortable with that. So, and she's, she's doing great. She's doing better than what I, I thought she'd be at this point. So still at, uh, the 54,000. Nutrition fund is always. Okay.
Who else?
Always, always, always. And I think I maybe mentioned last meeting, Terry's looking into, she needs a, um,
a new dishwasher and we want to get the conveyor belt one. And then she wants to get a refrigerator. Uh, because sometimes when the kids get their food and let's say it's yogurt and they don't have it, can go back in this like share refrigerator. Sort of if somebody would like an extra one, they can go get that. Um, but we're just not sure if we can get these things yet this fiscal year. So it might roll into next. But those, those are two things that we are allowed to use.
If we're allowed to use.
There isn't a question.
We started that a couple of years ago. There's a table down there, they have, you know, when you take your tray up, you know, dump it or whatever. If you don't drink your milk, set up kids just throwing it away. Set it on the table or if you don't eat your cheese stick. And I don't know, and it can't, it can't be like hamburger.
A packaged item that's left over that can.
Exactly, that's.
Safely.
Safely shared.
Yeah.
And it's great because a lot of kids were just throwing that away. But it'd be nice if there was a refrigerator put in. So, you know, let's say you go from junior high lunch to high school lunch, it's not sitting out. And like Angela said, we're looking for ways to spend some of that Covid.
Uh, yeah.
Money and so it's a win.
Okay, upload eleven is um, student activity fund. And I have, I told you time and time again what some of the negative balances are. The new one this month is uh, the vocal elementary. And that stems from the fact that they've just had an elementary vocal concert. And some of the teachers, you know, we need eyes on everybody. Um, they get paid to be at those events as a worker. So that's why that is a negative fifteen dollars and forty-seven cents at the time. Um, upload thirteen, driving report. You can see, you know, basketball season. It's, it's gonna be really short now that we're going into track season. And then again, it'll, it'll pick up again when we go into softball season. So. And then upload fourteen is all of the board bills. And um, nothing that I really noticed that I need to point out, most of the normal stuff. Uh, we did have in uh, Fund Twenty-Two on page eight of the board bills. We had our fourth quarter um, payment for our insurance equipment breakdown, insurance. And then we uh, tacked on the insurance for the used bus that we just got.
There was, there was another one that like did the city of Wilton that was kind of big. What, what was that for?
That's usually, the city of Wilton is our garbage, our electric, um, our sewer.
So just a city building.
Barn, elementary, junior, senior. So.
And payment from the SRO that we do.
Yes, and the SRO, that's some school resource officer, Sergeant Todd.
Thank you.
That comes out of theirs, yeah.
Got it.
But you'll notice there's not as much on credit cards because we are done with Townsend, the teachers. Thanks. So that is all I have, nothing for Saturday. So, which is good. So if you have any questions.
A second?
Those in favor, please indicate at the same time. Uh, posed, motion carries.
Easy for you to say.
Angela, when are you gonna go over here? Is that later?
Yeah, at the end. Unless you just want me to go over.
I don't know, it's kind of, if you want to just keep it on that table.
Okay. Alright, then if you guys would be so kind, um, upload thirty-nine. That is our audit report. And I have the physical copy right here. So if anybody wants to rather look at it, um, I've got several books in my office. So um, if you scroll to page five through seven, uh, that part of the audit report is addressed to the Board of Education. So those might be some pages that you might want to read. Um, again, um, and this from what I understand, every year happens. Uh, we got dinged for segregation of duties. Um, there just are not enough of us to separate things out. So we just, we get dinged for that. I mean, nothing.
Been that way over here since I've started.
So what's the penalty then?
There is, it.
It's just, it's just a suggestion to make things better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're aware of it and we're aware of it.
Yes. Yep, yep. Um, our uh, revenues were less than one percent increase over fiscal year twenty-one. I thought you would like to know that. And then our expenses um, was a five percent decrease over fiscal year twenty-one. So um, and then the only other thing is, we will go through that next, is I did have to amend the fiscal year twenty-three budget. We'll go over that next. So if you have any further questions about the audit, I will do my best to answer them. But those are the things I thought um, you would be interested in knowing, those revenue and expenditures percentages. And then, like I said, page five through seven.
And if you want to take time and look at that later and email Angela and you can click on that as well too if you have specific questions. Overall, the business functions in our office are very good and, and we get audited every year. So if there was something that would pop, you know, we'd address it.
Okay, thank you. Present it first.
Who can present it and then they'll vote on it later.
Okay, okay. So um, upload forty? Okay, upload forty. This is the fiscal year twenty-three budget amendment. So um, if you would look in that middle column where it says amendment increase under total other expenditures, there's four categories um, that we focus on when we look at it at the expenditures. And you'll see those listed off to the left, but it's under the other total expenditures where um, we need to increase that budget by five hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then off to the right there, um, the reason is, is because we've had several uh, building projects and site improvements. Um, and that includes our carryover and then with our, our Townsend donations. So that is the reason for doing that. Um, it wasn't one specific project. It was just the combination of everything we did. There was no one thing that just jumped out, just add up quickly. And sometimes those are hard to budget for.
So sometimes I'm wondering how come they weren't, they were gonna budget, if someone that were carryover and things that we kind of didn't know about, so that.
Well, at the end of the year, we had our, our um, our football lighting project. Um, and then we had the um, all the fees for the, the refunding of the geo bonds. Um, and I have a list of the projects too, that if you're interested in seeing that with the dollar amounts.
So these are things done like kind of late and last fiscal year after the budget was.
Part of it, yes, part of it, yes.
That makes sense.
Yes, because, you know, we set the budget now, you know, March. It's, it's sometimes hard. And then all that funding is, some of it's a year behind and.
I'll give you an example too. And you've heard me say this and I mean this sincerely, you may not get another dime, but we've been very blessed with the Townsend's of, you know, donating to the school. And typically, we meet with the Townsend Foundation folks in May, end of May, first of June. And we give them a wish list, if you will, of things we'd like to see done. Well, if they donate X number of dollars to X program, Angela doesn't know what that is going, like, and I don't either.
Yeah.
You know, and they may say, well, we'll give you, it might be a considerable amount of money.
True.
So, but those are totally fair questions, Rob. And that's the challenge of trying to forecast all of fiscal year twenty-four and early March of twenty-three. Yeah, no, but I, I understand as a board member, I would ask it.
But there's a similar process. Sometimes it's the timing of when a project's done versus, you.
Yeah, that too.
If Ben here says it'll be on June first and then it being July first, that all impacts it, so.
But the good news is the other three categories are good.
And I'm just asking, but is there something with this, you know, the five hundred and seventy-five thousand? Is there something we should rethink for next year as far as so we don't have to do this?
We do it a moment almost every year.
I know, but it seems like.
If you're trying to build in some money that you know is coming, then you overshoot it.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah.
It's, it's hot, it's, it's hard. I mean, it's Stacey's been helping me and it's, it's just hard. Like, the, the Townsend, I mean, just like Mr. Burnett said, I mean, it's awesome that they do that. But if they give an amount of money that I don't know is coming, that just throws everything out of whack. It really does. I mean, we appreciate it, but it makes it hard for.
Accounting.
Yes.
Budget.
Yes.
It's a great problem. I'll take it for you.
However, if you have suggestions, they're open ideas, so I, I, you know.
Alright, so.
You want to go over the budget presentation? This is Angela, Mike.
Um, your last upload, number forty-one. This is budget presentate, presentation for fiscal year twenty-four. That just seems really crazy to say, but it's what it is. So um, the first page is the adoption of the budget and the taxes for this next fiscal year. So the two things that I want to point out that I think as board members you will want to know is um, instructional support. We have set that at four percent this year. And then the number that everybody is.
Explain what that means, especially with Tommy on the board. What does four percent mean and where can it go? You know, what, what's the parameters on that?
Okay, so um, it is the amount from the, the, how we set our ISP, that I talked about, the ISP budget that we can use for instruction in the classroom. And you can set that anywhere from zero to twenty percent. And that, wherever you set that, will affect your tax rate, your levy rate. So it's something that we, we work scenarios. Um, I only have control over that and um.
Management levy?
The management levy. And then uh, Pebble, we always max out at thirty-three percent. That's all they allow for that. Um, and then obviously debt service is what it is. I, you know, bonds, I can't, I can't adjust that. So there's two, those two areas that I can work with that affect that grand total, that levy rate in that middle column of the thirteen point five-three. So four percent um, from the taxes is going to go towards that instructional part.
And the other sixteen percent that you could do, let's say you're to raise that to ten percent, okay? Does it affect the overall amount that we receive or just the overall amount which is property tax based?
Yes, it affects, it affects the amount that we receive.
But it doesn't affect, but explain that. And if, if it were to go up to five percent, how would that affect?
What's the fallout?
Yeah. I have this all written down on another piece of.
Sorry, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to help them understand what that means.
I appreciate it because I.
Well, I, I would be the same way, I just.
Yeah, um, if we increased it, then I believe it makes it drop even more. But then we want to keep that somewhat consistent because then the following year, we don't know what our tax valuation is gonna come back at. So it's always kind of a.
I guess the question I have, and I, this is sincere question. Are we maxing out the instructional support levy if there's an area? For example, in the instructional support levy, that, that's where we pay for textbooks. That's how we pay for building principals budgets, you know, and those types of things. And if, if we come in short and we would like to generate more revenue, I'm not sure that, what I'm saying is, or what I think, like, that four percent, it's not like we can take it to twenty percent and just generate a bunch of extra revenue. Or can we? That's what I'm saying. It's more of a basis of how that revenue is, how your levy is. Exactly, it's, it's four percent, but the actual overall, let's say you, you generate a hundred dollars. That four percent is how you generate the hundred dollars. What percentage of it is property tax based versus state aid based versus um, other levy parameters? That's what I'm saying. We have the ability to shift some of that up to twenty percent, but you can't generate more money. The cap is already there and we've capped that.
So the cap of the cap, if you increase your percentage, you're just allocating more of that hundred dollars to that category, which means you're, you're robbing it from another category.
Exactly. So I don't want you to think as board members, well, if it's only four percent, why don't we take it up to ten so we can have more money for the maintenance budget? Because we do some maintenance things out there too and different things. Well, that's not how it works.
So what was the instructional support levy at last year?
That's my next question.
It was at one, the last few years it has been at, at one, so we've increased that. And I'm, because I've already got it in published form, I was gonna try to go in and change it to twenty percent so that you could see how it would affect the levy rate. But I can't do that, sorry.
What we've tried to do the past number of years is keep our levy rate as steady as we can. Backfill where we can through our um, cash reserve levy. We have a cash reserve levy, so let's say, for example, the state doesn't across the board cut a two percent. We've got the spending authority back by cash to backfill that. If something comes up and we have to, I don't know, other examples, that, that's the main one. When you have cash reserve levy, it covers shortfalls in uh, state aid, state funding. So that's a levy too that the board can, we always try to maximize that when we can. So we have cash to back up our authority. I'm just trying to make sure I understand that piece on that.
Thirteen and a half, thirteen point five, et cetera, levy rate. What does that affect then? Like, what is, that's what then goes towards property tax, is that what you're saying?
Yep, for thousands of assessed value. That's different for farm, business, home, there's different rollbacks. Commercial's around ninety-one percent. Uh, homes are forty-ish percent and farm rollback value is in the thirties. So it's not the same. If you, what I'm saying is if you have a two hundred thousand dollar house and a farm valued at two hundred thousand dollars and a commercial property valued at two hundred thousand dollars.
You don't pay the same tax.
You don't pay the same tax. They go with that rollback value of your assessed value, ninety percent of it, forty-seven percent of it, thirty-seven percent. Can't be easy, Tommy.
I'm with you. I'm with you. We wouldn't have to justify the IRS department then. What you're saying, in the past year, so it's been one percent, correct? This is the first year we've been.
Yes, at um.
So what did it change? What was, what made this change? What made this go, I mean, from this year, from last year to this year? What was?
Okay, let, let me go on.
Okay.
In the presentation and maybe it'll help you on.
Before you do, is our grand total levy increasing or staying the same? The thirteen point.
The bottom line guy, it's going down.
Let me continue on and I will answer those questions, okay? Alright. So the next page you're gonna look at is the twenty-three, twenty-four proposed tax breakdown. So of that thirteen point five-three percent, six point nine four is gonna go towards our general fund. But you know, that's, we use general fund to pay for most everything, okay?
And if I may say this, eighty percent of our general fund is salaries and benefits. Okay, twenty percent is for everything else, eating. You know, I mean, our other costs that we have in the district. So when you hear general fund, eighty percent of it's your employees.
Okay, and then the one, or point nine eight seven eight nine, that is um, for the management fund. So that portion of the thirteen point five is gonna go to the management fund. And that's where we pay all our insurance out of, a workman's comp, that type of thing, okay?
Retirement, or retirement benefits?
Retirement, yep. Okay, and then Pebble, you'll see that is point three-three, we always max that out. I can't, it's just, like Mr. Burnett was saying the other day, you know, they've had that for years. It's time to change that.
Thirty-three cents on the dollar used to go a lot further toward a new school bus in nineteen ninety-five than it does now, right?
Yeah.
So.
So like I said, I don't change that one. And then the next one that I can't change, the property taxes for debt service, that is based off of our payments that we have to make this next fiscal year for the revenue and the geo bonds. So I can't change that. So the only areas that I can change, like I said, is management fund, which you see is set is at three hundred thousand. That's exactly what I, we did last year too. Okay? So you can see at the bottom, the levy history. So it has been a few decades since we've been at thirteen point five-three. Last year was fourteen point five-six. So hopefully that answers one of your questions.
So where is the bulk of that reduction coming from then?
Um, it's a calculation. Um, it's a calculation, and it's based off of, so if we go back a page below that grand total, that thirteen point five-three, you've got your taxable valuation with gas and electric of the three oh three, six seventy-six. That's, um, how we come up with our, um, our tax rate per thousand for the general fund, okay? And then, um, if you look at the debt service, the Pebble, the ISL valuation, that's three hundred and twenty-two, seven eighty-five, or three fifty-six. That's what we're gonna use to come up with the debt service and Pebble tax rate per thousand.
What changed in the last year? Valuations up twenty percent. If you're evolving farming, and you know what valuations have done on property, and everything for that matter, but farm in particular, and we're a big rural community, when the valuations go up, typically, your tax rate goes down a little bit, because it's, you know, a smaller tax rate to fill that. And the other thing that I'm recommending we change is, um, an income surtax. And you, if you fill out, when you do your taxes in every district, wherever you file your taxes or you live, school district, district has the ability of running this income surtax of up to ten percent of what your funding requirement is, okay? An income surtax, I don't know how people look at this, it helps the property tax owner, you can keep it at zero if you want, okay? We've been at one percent. My recommendation is we take it to four percent. An income surtax, if someone, better for worse, lives in an apartment in Wilton, um, doesn't pay property tax directly. Now, they could through their rent, you know, you could argue, well, they rent this and a part of their rent's going toward that. But it just makes it a little bit more, and the reason it was put in place years ago in the legislature is that it gave a little bit of a benefit to the people that have property, you know, and they paid the property tax, so they allowed school districts to use an income surtax levy of up to ten percent to offset that a little bit. Ours has been extremely low, okay? And we haven't adjusted it, because our goal has been in the past to try to keep it at that fourteen, fifty-six, thirty-six rate. Rob and Linda will know this, and Tim maybe a little bit, but we refinanced our GO bonds, and we were paying ahead. When we had the opportunity to keep our tax rate the same, even though it went down, we collected that money to put toward the bond, and, you know, that helped pay it off. We're at the point now, we've only got five or six years left, so really not a point we could refinance and save a lot of money. So, in just our conversations, this is up to you as a board, and that's why I'm full transparency. I recommend that we take it to four percent, the income surtax, because again, I believe it's a little more equitable for the farmer, the business person.
I'm confused, how does it benefit the homeowner? So, they're getting, uh...
Well, the homeowner, it'll help them on their property tax, okay? Because they're not having to pay as much property tax, because we're, you think of a hundred percent of what we owe, of what we have to generate, up to ten percent, ten percent of that could be through an income surtax. And the other ninety percent's property tax. What we did thus last year, one percent of what we collected was income surtax, ninety-nine percent was through property tax.
Got it.
Okay? It's not a huge thing, but it gives an opportunity. Now, where it affects a property homeowner, I'm in Tim's house, and my property taxes will go down a little bit, depending on Tim's, Tim's income. If Tim makes, which I think, two million a year, he will pay a much higher rate than Rob, who only makes a million a year. So, you catch what I'm saying?
If, if you make a lot of money but live in a cardboard box, it, it's gonna, it's going to penalize you.
Right, right. And I'm not trying to penalize anybody, okay? Well, what I'm saying is, it just gives people an opportunity, especially people that pay a lot of property tax, which I respect, it just spreads it a little bit. Now, someone can argue it's regressive tax, I get that too. So, you know, because some of the rents might not...
It's the same valuation that's getting generated, it's just the difference of where it comes from.
It's a way to, yeah, it's how you generate it.
When you say one percent or four percent, is that literally one percent of somebody's income?
No, it's one percent of what we need to generate.
Okay. So, we're not talking like...
Not one percent of your income. You would know ten percent. Don't feel bad, Tommy, don't twice. Tommy, get out of here.
Tommy got a one percent rate, they don't wanna lose it.
Point taken, point taken. And the only time, well, the only time you know that is when you do your taxes.
I probably get a one percent rate, I don't wanna lose it.
See, I live in the Western District, and every year I do my taxes, they pull it out, and here's the term for the Western District, they have, I don't know if there's a max, but it's up there. Well, you gotta put this much toward your...
Their demographics are a little different, though.
No, 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 I'm just giving you an example.
But I get why they do that, because they have a, a lot of people who share one home, and then they'll, you know, so they send a lot of kids to school, but they don't pay a lot of property tax, so it has to be offset somewhere.
I just wanted to point that out, because we built that in the budget, and I said to Angela, I said, "I'm gonna put this on the board, and if you're okay with going to four percent, it gives us flexibility in the future to either take it up if we need to, or we have the ability to take it down if we..."
But because it's generated different, I mean, the, the four percent on, on the income tax, I guess it's the same amount, you, you just, I, never mind, I'm confused myself, but I understand what you're saying.
The four percent is not the four percent on your income.
Right, 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 that's where I...
It's four percent of what's needed or generated by the district. That doesn't mean everybody in the district's gonna pay four percent. Okay? Because obviously, there's different tax brackets, different levels, you know, and there's different collection rates. I'm not trying to muddy the waters.
No, we have the most complicated tax system possible, so...
You made it clear.
Okay.
So, that makes more sense.
Put them together, so...
Especially for everyone listening to, so...
That's good work.
What's good? Sorry? No, he just made it, I, I think he explained it well, and I think that's good.
Okay, well, I just...
If anyone's listening, and I'm clear, they should...
Exactly.
Or Tim's secretary, who manages the house well. The butler.
All right, so looking, looking back, I pulled up, um, last year's adoption of the budget, and our taxable valuations from last year to this year went up just over twenty-two million dollars. So, that, that has an effect. Okay, so I'm gonna move on to, um, the next one, which is the public...
Which one, I'm sorry?
What, with your...
Public, or a notice of public hearing. Okay, so, what I just wanna point out here, uh, those four categories that I talked about before, um, are just showing our instruction, the amount of money that we are projected to spend in that area, ten million, two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand. And then, below that are the total support services, administrative and what have you, just under five-point-five million. And then, our non-instructional programs, just over a million. And what, uh, follows below that, then would be our other expenditures, where our debt service falls into that category, and that's at nineteen-nine. So, again, our proposed tax rate is at thirteen point five-three, two-five-two. But that's just a breakdown of, of where the, the money is going to be per those four So, the next one, then, um, I show you the breakdown by fund of the expenditures. So, in general fund...
Sir, I have a quick question. So, the income surtaxes, you're showing a budget of fifty thousand for twenty-twenty-four, but it's higher in previous years, I'm not...
It's because your income surtax is a year behind. So, we will get this this coming fiscal year.
Okay.
And then, it will be, I think it's, I wanna say like a hundred-and-eleven thousand, but it's the, income surtax is always a year behind.
I'm confused, though, if we've been at one percent for quite a while, how come it was at a hundred-and-eleven thousand and I, like, it dropped in half? Even with the lag, if, if our rate's been flat, why is it that variable?
I don't know if that has to do with how they collect that. I honestly, I can't answer that question, Rob, I don't know. But that is a year behind. And again, the way the state puts the formula together, um, I mean, I can research that for you and get an answer to you.
I'm just curious, it's not critical or anything. Didn't make sense when I looked at it.
Okay.
The news is, we're not responsible for calculating. You know, I mean, it's not like we have a ability, we just put in what, you know...
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I can go into the, the state budget file, and it shows you the calculation, and it's this times this equals this, less this, and, yeah, it's all a formula. I only, I can only insert amounts in certain areas, otherwise, the state calculates it for me. And I'm sorry, with me being so new, I can't explain exactly everything.
That one may have still Stacy also heard.
But I am happy to give that information for you. So, the next one is a breakdown by fund. So, our general fund and the expenditures that we have budgeted for fiscal year twenty-four, and then, our special revenues, that's your activity fund and the management fund, and then, our capital projects fund is your one-cent sales, our Pebble, and then, our other capital projects fund would be Fund Thirty-four, um, and you know now, I've tried to clo- close that out, we don't have any upcoming projects where we need that, that fund. And then, our debt service, um, and I, this next one will show that, that is an exact amount, because we have a, a schedule to show exactly what those, those principal and interest payments are going to be. And then, our preparatory funds, where we, um, are figuring our nutrition latch key and our FFA expenditures, giving us a total, uh, grand total there at the bottom. The next page is just our district tax rates to give you some history, to see what the rate has been from year to year, and then, what our proposed rate is for fiscal year twenty-two, or, excuse me, twenty-four. And then, just a graph at the bottom, just kinda showing you visually what that, that change looks like. So, just some historic information for you. And then, your next page is, is the same thing, the trends in the, uh, property tax valuations. So, you can see that this year, it jumped over eight percent, and that's the highest that we've had in decades. And again, the graph to show that visually for you. So, then, our instructional support, support levy program, that just shows you the breakdown. We are taking the max of ten percent, and then, from that, the state takes a hundred-and-ninety-three thousand. I don't know why they don't take that out of the formula, but it, we don't get a portion of that six-hundred-and-fifty, and then, that's where, um, that four percent of the instructional income surtax comes in. So, that gives us a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, five-hundred. So, you can see at the bottom what our increase in authority has been from this current year. We'll get an extra twenty-three thousand, um, added to our, uh, ISP authority. So, that's what that does for us. And then, I like to show you on the next page, the estimated instructional support levy program. That's where I put the budget together for junior, senior, elementary, all of those different areas, um... Andy's the one that I bumped a little bit, because I know that's gonna be, probably at close this year, and we know, I just, getting things fixed anymore is just, it's more expensive. So, that's how I applied tho- those dollars that we're gonna receive within our different budget areas, and then, um, every year, you know, we pay, or we spend that ISP down to nothing, we don't ever carry over. Okay? And then, the last page is our long-term debt schedule, and I put that in there just so you can see what we're expecting to pay this next fiscal year, what our, our, uh, payment's gonna be for the GO bond and interest payment due there, and then, at the bottom, we've got our revenue bonds, our total principal due, and then, our interest, and then, we always have an administrative fee associated with, with those. So, that is the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-four. Any other questions that I can answer or find the answer?
If you have them, call or email Angela.
Yes.
Between now and April's meeting. Go through it, or ask me, or...
And you asking questions and wanting information helps me learn too, 'cause I'm, I'm learning this, this process myself, so your questions are appreciated. All right, we paid the bills, we did all Angela presented, so now, we can move on, because we will approve the budget later, okay?
Setting the budget.
Setting the budget, and then, and then, the budget, budget, proposed budget, hearing and all that good stuff, that's individual consent. All right, so, we did administrative, so now, we're on to consent agendas, correct?
Yep.
You have consent agenda number one.
This was alluded to earlier, it's a busy time of year, it's, uh, wrapping up this year and a lot of, and, and we're preparing for next year, you know, with positions and whatnot. Some of these on here, like our pair educators and cooks, you know, it's immediate, they have to give two weeks' notice, and so, those jobs tend to be a little bit more revolving door. But you can see, we have a couple pair educators there, someone in the kitchen. Uh, Joe Hewitt is assistant varsity wrestling, wrestling coach, um, with his role next year as, uh, assistant high school principal and curriculum. He's gonna double at the time to that. And then, Dakota Hargary Vamaka is assistant varsity volleyball. She hasn't said this, but I know she really enjoys the wrestling, and those two overlap a little bit, you know, what she does, so... Those are the resignations. Under the transfers, um, you can see Mr. Hewitt there, as I said a minute ago, and I, we had a really good committee, I think there were twelve people on the committee, thirteen if you count Ms. O'Donnell, uh, that met a week ago tonight. Tim was on that, and Linda was on that, and, um, I thought both candidates were very good, it just came down to the experience and the skill sets at the secondary level, it really was the tipping point. But I thought our other candidate was outstanding too.
Mm-hmm, oh, yes.
And I encourage the other candidate, who's also in-house, we're gonna have some leadership positions open in the elementary over the next couple of years, and, um, hoping to keep her in the district by saying, "Hey, these are some leadership things I think you'd be really good at." So... And then, Ms. Miller, uh, Ms. O'Donnell talked about her, but that was with Marsha Hessler's retirement, that's what position she's putting, or sliding into. So, and as we mentioned, it's the puzzle pieces, now we've got Ms. Miller's position open at the secondary level, and we have a teacher in-house who'd like to slide to that, which means that we'll have an opening there, so, that's why it's good, and we have a retirement incentive to be doing this, though, in March, not in May, from applicant's standpoint. And then, the job description over there, which I think it looks fine, it should just be all duties to be assigned within your program, that would cover it, but we, a little more specific to that. Are there any questions on our consent agenda number one?
Question to approve?
All those in favor, please indicate by saying, "Oh..."
Hi.
Proposed motion carries. All right, consent agenda number two.
You bet, I'm gonna go through this as quickly as I can, but also, hopefully, to answer any questions, you forgive me, 'cause my computer, I watch Angela's presentation, but I'm up on mine, and there's a lot of, trying to talk, and go through this. But, on this, there's nothing that I recommend changes on that five-oh-four series that is listed under consent agenda number two. Where there's some changes, is in consent agenda number three, okay? Three of the policies in consent agenda number two... Three of the policies in consent agenda number three are in that 504, 505 series. And they're pulled out because it takes two readings to get those approved with the recommended changes. That does not mean if you have questions, like to see us revisit any of those in consent agenda number two, we can't. So are there any questions on those? Those are the ones that we don't see anything that would require a change.
And usually we do that if, to do what we're doing.
Yeah.
We change them usually because.
Reflex.
Right. What we're doing. And that's why I think such as the student, one in the consent agenda three.
Yep.
Yeah. We want it to state what we are doing. Okay. So.
Don't make a motion to accept consent agenda number two.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Posed. Motion carries. All right.
Excellent. All right. I'll explain the first three quickly. The first reading of policy 504.6, student fundraising. Joy can help me on this because she oversees this. This is something that, that we're required to do to have all of the fundraising upfront, in front of the board as far as approving it. So example, we do a wreath sale, do a fruit and FFA sale. We'll have to have a list of everything in front of you in August. That's how things have changed. And if, I don't know. And if for some reason someone wants to, I don't know, the wrestling team decides to do a whatever sale, we can bring that to the board and amend it, but they want everything upfront. Joy, do you know the premise of that?
It's an auditor's suggestion.
It's coming down from our auditor. And it's. Yeah. She's the one that's recommending this.
Okay.
Can I ask, I'm going to ask this question because we're flexible here. This is up the board, but it sure creates a lot of approving and whatnot. What if we don't?
I would ask the same question.
This is a recommendation.
It's a recommendation. See, I, I look at two arms, recommended and required. Required gets my attention. Recommended, I look at. Required.
Where it's included in the activities reports. I mean, so that we saw some oversight. If there's something that's way out of whack, we can know about it.
Cause we know.
But we don't have to approve it necessarily. I don't know who people up and do what they need to do.
I know one of the issues was making sure that it's paid for. But, or if, everything has been collected upfront. And we had issues with that in years past. So I know this is one of the reasons why that part's in there. But as far as the rest of it, I.
You know what we could do, guys? If you want, pull this one from tonight. Let us investigate it further. Come up with some ideas and some options. And doesn't mean at the end of the day, I don't come back and say, hey.
This was taken, a part of it was taken from the auditor and part of it was taken from, I asked, I asked vote. So typically this is what school districts go with. And I, I actually have North Scott's too. So if you would like to look at theirs in comparison, just to get an idea.
So it's common to do something.
I'd like to see us, I'm not a board member, but I just tell them like, I'd like to see us investigate this and see if it's recommended or required. Because there's a difference in my mind of those things.
And I guess I'm just not a big fan of making everybody think of what they might need to have for a fundraiser once a year. Like, you know what I mean? Like, yeah.
Well, define a fundraiser. What if we do a 50/50 at a home wrestling meet with, I don't know, the girls wrestling program? We missed it in August. You know, I mean, practicality.
If a, if a district our size has a policy like this, I'd like to also see their reading minutes before they approve it. Because I want to see how that all flows. Cause that just doesn't make sense really for, like you're saying.
Well, and I think the reason behind this too is so that you guys get a heads up on fundraising. So that they don't do it without approval.
And you can, you kind of know the purpose of why they're doing this fundraising, you know? Is it, is it going to be for like funding for new uniforms? Is it for, you know?
I feel like they can be accomplished through a notice in their monthly report as opposed to permission seeking.
That this is coming up.
Yeah, Ryan could put in his activity report each month.
Speaking for myself, I trust our administrators to make good choices. The people aren't just throwing these.
As long as the funds are recorded, we're going to get it to your report. Like whatever the FFA is, we, we, we do what it generates.
I mean.
I get, I get what you're saying. I understand the limitation of somebody can't just.
Say, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this this month. I like your suggestion. Let's pull it.
I mean, we can probably next month. It's not like we don't have a timeframe.
Let's give it, let's, I, I make a motion that we pull it and we review it.
Well, no, here's what we'll do. We'll say, if everything else goes smoothly, we'll say, I approve consent agenda number three with pulling out of A. So, but well, then it's one case. If you're okay with that, I'll work with Angela and Joy and we'll talk to the, you know, different organizations. And again, what's required, what's recommended.
Yeah. And I know Lana, she spent part of her weekend working on that because she had several things to pull from. So I, we'd want to include her.
That's, no, absolutely. It just buys us time. Why?
So they're not wrong, but I mean.
I agree.
We, we don't want some random club just automatically associating themselves with people that are not going to.
They have to have administrative approval before anything can be done.
Yep.
The question is, do you want that to go to the next level of the board? And sometimes it's a timing thing. We don't have a board meeting. Let's say tomorrow, someone comes to me from the ag farm. Hey, we want an auction off X. Well, we don't have a board meeting until April. Sorry, you gotta wait a month. You know, I mean.
I, I agree.
So B goes with A, really? Well, this is a new regulation that we want to put in place that coincides with this. So it's kind of just giving some regulation to the rule.
Well, should we put B with A then and pull both of those and then they can both be approved next month?
Well, that's what I was.
That's a good catch, Linda. I agree.
Because, yeah, we're not doing. All right.
So letter C. Okay. Letter C is different. We're not fundraising here.
All right. This is student.
Okay. You can see on letter C, it's about our retention, acceleration, promotion piece. Instead of. Anytime we're in a situation where someone has to be accelerated, or if we feel like that student needs to repeat a grade level, it doesn't come in front of the board. Okay? That decision's made by the staff and the building principal. However, just know any decision that's made at any level in the district always, always can be appealed to the board. Doesn't have to say that in here, but anything. I say we're going to paint the bleachers gold and everybody's in an uproar. They can bring it to you and say we want it blue. So. So you can see, we just updated that. So if someone was curious, well, who makes that decision? Well, it's, it's going to be the teachers and the building principal.
Not the board.
Not the board. However, again, it can be appealed to the board. Secondly, what we've, and it says that through the students' lines and grievances in the bottom. Secondly, what we've always done, and I think it's good practice and we don't have this in here because at the end of the day, the district can determine where a student is placed. Okay? That's the prerogative of the district. We've always worked and I don't know of many cases, if any, where the, the parents don't give off the final blessing. Cause it's been my professional belief, if the parent doesn't believe in it and back the school on Joe repeating third grade, Joe's not going to have a good experience in third grade if the parent's saying that was the dumbest decision ever. I don't know why you're going back to third grade. If they don't sign off on it, they're accelerated. Where rubber hits the road is going to get to high school. When you hit high school, the clock starts. If you don't pass freshman algebra or freshman English, you know, English one, and you don't pass, you're not accelerated. You don't get a diploma unless you graduate, you know, pass all those classes. Right, wrong, or indifferent. Fifth grade is not a, it's not the same.
It's not a make or break.
Well, it's a make or break, but it's not like in the sense where you fail fifth grade, you're not getting a diploma. But of course, the principals meet with the parents and say, hey, we recommend that Joe be retained because you know, there's low in reading and math. And think another year would benefit him. But we'd like your blessing to do that. So that's a lot about, but that's a big piece. I mean, that's a very sensitive issue. All we're doing in this policy is changing, using the teachings to building principle. And I'm telling you, that's what we practice.
I do like the inclusion of the, just reminding them that they can grieve it if they don't like the decision.
Yeah.
It's important to note. So. Cause I don't want to be, yeah. I don't want to be the decision maker of whether or not someone should be retained or not. But if they, if there's a disagreement that we need to hear about, that's our story. So.
Yep. No, exactly. And that's the beauty of the board. You're the judge and jury on that. So are there questions on that? All right. D, E, and F are second readings from last month. I'm not going to go through those, but I'll give you 15 seconds to, if you want to look at them. You can. I don't have any questions, but again, we discussed those in February.
Isn't that, I think I forgot to put in 503.3.
503.3 is here.
503.3. Yep. It's there?
I didn't, okay. Good. All right.
Letter G is our K6 music and 712 science curriculum purchases. As I mentioned earlier, that's out of, or Angela did, out of ISP. That's how we utilize that. Our curriculum director, who's currently Mr. Meyer, works with those departments in getting, you know, an idea of what they need and where they're at. And you can see that. I don't know what number is that? 34? What page it's on there?
Yes. Yeah. Upload 34.
Yep. Letter H is our MOU, or excuse me, MOA, memorandum of agreement with Mississippi Bend AA for homeschool assistance program. We work with them. They have a liaison. Currently, Ms. Bruno is our homeschool liaison, our homeschool liaison at school. And we work with the AA. They give us the guidance on how to work with those families to choose to homeschool their kids. But we have to have an agreement with the AA to allow that. We've done that forever. That's an annual renewed agreement. Letter I is our MOU with MCC for that career and college counselor service. They have had a hard time getting someone in that role this year. We're not, I think I included you on that email, Angela. If I didn't, I will. Cause I asked the question, will we even bill for that? Hey, we're not getting someone. We better not be in the bill for the MCC. And Naomi said she didn't, wasn't sending us a bill. Will you see if I sent you that? But that was like yesterday. Okay. I'll forward that to you. But I just, I'm anal about that. Well.
I agree.
Don't send me a bill.
If you provide the service, don't do it.
That's what I'm saying. But.
All I know is they're increasing everything.
I know, I know. But. And remember that program is paid for out of our operational sharing dollars. That we get supplemental, or operational sharing incentive from the state. Remember I talked about that last month with certain positions. That's one of them. So. And then you're going to see throughout the spring, we have agreements with different colleges for student teaching placements. Ones with Morningside will get one from the University of Iowa, St. Ambrose, different ones in the area. So. And then letter K is the 2324 latch key handbook. Joy, is there any changes in there that you saw? Did she strike anything? I glanced at it. I didn't see.
I just looked through it. Of course, the dates.
That's what I mean, the calendar.
Calendar's revised, um, increasing.
Summer, all the prices are changed in there.
Are they? Well, that's what I, okay.
What, just roughly like a percent of change increase?
Or just $10 on the line.
Ten, five to $10 on everything.
Okay. Good.
I'd like to hold on that one. I, I'd like, can do this next time maybe if that's all right.
Of course.
I'd like to know more about the justification and why now.
For the price increase?
Yeah. Because in relation to just the strain that families have with inflation everywhere. If we could even hold off a year, I think that might be worth considering, but I, I don't know enough to know if that's smart. So I'd like to know more.
Okay. And I can print off what you guys decided for as far as their pay increases. And Ann got the highest pay increase of anyone.
I remember that.
And because they're self-funded.
Correct.
Yeah. So I can give those numbers for you.
Rob, I don't want to pull origin out, but I think what he's saying is given their current balance being positive and they're able to maintain at the current salary levels.
I understand we, we may be in a deficit spending situation to where we're going to have to increase eventually. I just would like to evaluate whether now is the time or whether we do it next year. I'm not a fan of kicking the can down the road, but I think we got to balance this out.
I'll even step further. I think you're, I think you're right. Let's get through a bargaining and see what the increase is going to be in salaries for all of our employees. And then we'll know, hey, this is going to eat into X. That'll justify bringing that up. So I think this is kind of the cart to have the horse. I mean, in my opinion, I think that's, you know, and then it's justifiable saying, well, you know, salary and benefits are going to go up by X. We're asking for Y to help alleviate that increase.
And the only reason why we jumped on this is because I had to have the budget put together for this next year.
That being said, if you don't take the increases, will they have a negative account? Like what? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. It's hard to say that because I don't know what her, I mean, she has a feel for her numbers for summer and for this next year. But it's, you know.
Summer's a wild card.
Yes, it is. And she has, has noted how, you know, all the food prices for all our snacks, as she has to replace toys every so often. All that stuff went up in price besides just the wages.
What if we do this? And I think this is fair. And she wasn't able to come tonight, but typically Ann does come to go over the, if she can, the handbook. And Angela or Joy, what if we go back and say, hey, the board pulled that and they would just like you to put together your projected costs for next year? How this thing, you know, and.
Yeah.
And why we're recommending an increase. And then you can hash it over with her, make a decision on what you want to do, if anything.
And it's pretty evident an increase is going to have to happen at some point. I'm not disputing that at all. And even, even looking at just the trends of our ending balance over the last couple of years would be helpful. I'm just, yeah, want to make sure the timing is truly a need and, and not.
We don't need that account to swell, just to swell at the expense of.
Right. And that's.
Well, here's the good news, guys. This, this kind of comes full circle. If she needs to adjust the budget next year, just know if there's an adjustment made, this is part of the reason why. So in Angela's defense, she's trying to get a number so she can build a budget.
For sure.
But just know, when we do an amendment, it's not because she's not doing her job. It's just there's certain things that pop up after. We approve it.
Well, no. So I'm assuming you guys are doing a job and there's a raising. You have a reason for this five to $10. You know what I mean? So, I mean.
Well, if you just understand it better, I think Rob's.
That's all I'm asking.
And it's, and it's a tough year to, to determine that. And we were really nervous about this year because she kept getting all that grant money. And then that stopped. So this has been kind of an adjustment year. So.
But I'm just thinking, in, in very basic terms, if we have a $50,000 ending, ending balance and a pair of little kids is saying, why are you jacking my rates when you're sitting on 50 grand in the bank? Fair question. So.
Well, what's a, what's a healthy number to sit on? You know, I don't know.
Yeah, you gotta have some cushion, but like.
Yeah. You know, I, no, I'm with you. But what's, what's a healthy number?
We, we want to make that as self-sustaining as possible without exorbitant amount of excess.
And I will tell you that she has shared with me that we are one of the lowest.
See, that'd be good to have comparison data too. You know, what's, what's somebody tipped in the grants?
And quite frankly, I'm glad that we can offer that service at the lowest. That makes me very happy to hear.
Oh, yes. All right.
Hey, guys, these are good conversations. Please just make sure Ann knows we're not questioning her. We're just.
Absolutely.
We're just trying to look at the system in place to say, hey, how's our system work?
And if I know Ann, she would appreciate the fact that we don't want to raise anybody if we don't have to.
And if I'm in Ann's shoes, I don't want to get to a spot where the balance is 20,000 and, and we're asking tough questions about that. Sure got to stay ahead of that.
Yeah. Well, hey, guys, I tried.
But I want the information so we can at least collectively decide, we're, no, we're okay with that. If it means putting this off for you. I just don't know what the numbers would look like. So.
Hey.
Good point. Yep. Great.
That's why we can pull these things and do our homework and bring them back.
All right.
So that being said, on consent agenda number three, from what I've heard, the recommendation is to approve consent agenda number three while tabling A, B, and K be revisited at the April board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. All right. Individual consent.
Angela went over this.
Yep. It's the audit is first.
The audit. And then we need a motion of second for, you know, individually for these four.
Move to approve audit.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
Move to approve the budget amendment as presented.
With the date.
At the set date time.
Wednesday, April 12th.
Okay.
2023 at 5:30 PM in the Media Center, Wilton Junior Senior High Media Center.
It's our normal court meeting.
Move to approve with the date and time Joe just said.
So.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. All right.
And you can say this. You can say this one the same as the amendment.
Yes.
To follow that.
To approve the proposed budget at the same time, except for the amendment here.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
Man, I'm seeing better boards.
Of legal counsel.
Yeah.
That's not in here. Where's that? Did I miss it?
I missed it.
Well, I'm, I'm sharing it with you. There is no.
Piece of paper?
Yeah, there is no upload on this one.
Okay.
Brett Nitschke.
Yes.
Who we've worked with for a number of years. Him and his partner Emily Ellingson. We, we work closely on everything we've done. And we moved to Lynch Dallas a few years ago. Brett used to be Brian Groon's assistant.
Yes.
Okay.
Remember that, yep.
When Brian Groon retired, Brett went to a firm. Well. Allers and Cooley does all the bond counsel, okay? So they're educationally based. Lynch Dallas is not an educational firm, okay? They're, Brett and Emily were the branch of that. Well, they've merged with, Allers and Cooley recruited them to come over there because they do all education stuff. And Brett and Emily do all education stuff. We use Allers and Cooley all for a lot of our bond counsel, et cetera, et cetera. So it's my recommendation is to stick with Brett because I think he's great and he knows his stuff and that's what we call for, that an issue. But I need board approval to say, hey, that's our legal, that's our designation of legal counsel.
So Allers and Cooley or Brett Nitschke?
It's Allers and Cooley. He works for them. But, Cooney.
Cooney.
Yes, Cooney.
Because we do this at our reorganizational meeting. And now we're changing it because of what you're saying.
Yep.
So this is why, this is why we need to do this. I was saying, we already did that.
I know, I know. It's confusing, but.
It's all right.
So move to approve legal counsel, so it's Allers and Cooley.
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. All right.
All right, you can see the hirings down below, one, two, and three, as mentioned earlier. I don't know if there's anything under maintenance. I don't really have anything to mention at this point. I know we, Andy's still working, you know, on everything that came up at our meeting.
The, the, the biggest one, I guess, of concern for me was the, the potential to have to have that dugout out back for whatever. They thought something was crushed potentially or something. Have we gotten?
I have not heard any further. I think he's waiting for Brad Jip to come up here and give an assessment.
I'm assuming that, and Jip's probably busy, so.
But that's, that's the variable on that.
I get it.
Once we know, we'll get it though. Warranting over and. Well, Linda and I were discussing earlier a little bit off the side. It was just that, I know in our, go ahead, Linda.
Well, when we, at the meeting, we have an agreement. And the former mayor was concerned about how this school can just get out of this agreement. Well, we can because it's like a twenty-eight E. We have to give thirty-day notice.
Ninety days.
Ninety-day notice, I'm sorry, ninety-day notice. And it's like, I thought, felt we needed to do that. Now, I know verbally we have said, you know, from the school board, you know, but I don't know how that would work if, if it totally then completely cuts everything off, that we don't, you know, because we still own the building and everything, so I don't know. So just to have it out there to know how and when and, and what.
That's a, that's, that's a really good legal question because you're right. We still have to have the agreement in play to an degree as long as the building exists.
But we.
And we're still part owners. We technically own the building.
Yeah. So until they really get what they're doing, but I guess I want people, I want the city and to know, which we verbally have said, but I don't know if there's anything we can do in the meantime.
And I would even further question the legality of the ninety-day requirement because that agreement only suffices if the pool is in existence. Once the pool ceased to performance function, I think any legal requirements would, would be null and void by either party because you don't, you don't have a product.
Well, it's just something to think about. We were just talking about that.
And that's, I'm just.
That we need to give our, you know, we need something the board to approve saying.
Or maybe something else, maybe a whole other agreement or, or, or understanding that this is, we don't want to be. We will support what things we've reiterated to say, but I guess it's verbal.
Well, I agree though that we need to put, I would, I would highly recommend we do it in writing, just to be clear that, like, start the clock. We'll, we'll extend if we, if we need to, but you're on the clock for our ninety days. That way, if the new, I, I just can't imagine something pops up, but should something happen and they reopen it, then, and we didn't issue it, they could potentially come back.
Not in writing and it's not been approved by the board in board minutes.
Yes.
I think it needs to be done, absolutely.
But if we give this ninety-day notice, does that keep us from honoring our commitment to, for example?
We said.
Paying the power bill.
Because we're not.
Because, and.
Having liability insurance because that.
Yeah.
That, that policy expires.
Because the agreement just speaks for the operation.
I thought it was in April. I think it's.
I think Maggie said it was April.
It's an operational agreement, correct. So any ownership obligations would still be ours, such as insurance, but.
Until they buy it from us.
Until they purchase it.
Till the city purchases it from us.
But then, say the bond doesn't pass to renovate. Is the city talking like they're willing to split the demo costs if it comes to that, or is that not a part of the conversation?
If, if the agreement's still in play, then yes, they have to. If the agreement's terminated, then where are we at? Yes, I get your point.
Because it is our building.
Well, all that.
That brings up a lot of questions because if we terminate this in three months and we still have the building for a year and we carry liability, they can't split it with that. Now we're a hundred percent. Now, when you think when he's done, we're a hundred percent.
But I guess that's, that's what I'm saying. Is there a way we can seek legal advice? Because there's probably a verbiage that could be assessed to our ninety-day notification that says, we're, we're issuing our ninety days to terminate at such time that it's able to, to be done.
Because this is a very unique situation.
Yeah.
But what also is interesting, and I'm just throwing out the center, I don't know the answer. Let's say hypothetically, they move forward, they go for a bond. Once a bond is passed, it could be up to a year before that thing's functional.
Correct.
And to me, just thinking out loud, I don't know, because I've delved into this. That's when you put it in writing of, hey, once the pool is open, we're giving you notice now that thirty days prior to the pool opening, we're, you know, or we're picking day. I don't know what it is.
Well, somewhere they gotta buy the pool before they renovate it. And that would be a termination.
Well, maybe that stage, then, once you sell it, then you're out. And then that's null and void.
Yeah.
I would think, but I guess that's what I'm saying. I don't know that I want to go off, I, you know, I stay on express, but I didn't get a law degree.
Something to think about. We need to think about and how, how.
See, the problem is if we call Brett Nitschke, which I could.
We're gonna pay for it.
We're gonna.
Well, it's not only paying for it, but I don't know what kind of, he's gonna say, well, when are you gonna turn it over?
We don't know. There's too many, I don't know.
When is the pool gonna be focused on again? I don't know. He's not gonna know what to tell us.
Well, but I think that's my point of saying, like, that's where the question is. What kind of verbiage or stipulation can we add to our, our ninety-day notice that says, this serves as our notice? But we will honor until. And, and there's probably a way to write.
Go with.
Until.
Until it's, it's resolved to, to the point that we're out.
It's not ours anymore. It's not ours. Until they purchase it from us, moving forward to renovate. Right, because when they start renovation, it's still our building.
They have, they, they have to buy it before they can renovate it.
Right.
So can we dictate to them that you're going to pay for half the insurance until we decide we want out?
No, it, it's really their choice when they want to purchase. And that's when we, I mean, they have to pay half until it's theirs and they take one hundred percent. So really, we're doing the favor. I mean.
Wouldn't you have to put that in your purchase agreement, that between now and when we sell this to you, you're gonna stay at half and half with all expenses?
Well, and or I guess the, the third option is, is we go to them and say, we have zero interest in going forward. We want to not have to continue paying for insurance and so on and so forth. Either you purchase the building now while you've tried a bond, or, you know what I mean, like, that, that's where you'd have to, basically, you have to create the endpoint and say, we're done. What are you gonna do now? How, how are you gonna carry the ball?
Well, here's a further question. Does the city know a hundred percent what they're doing?
No, not a.
No, they don't. They don't, yeah.
Until they do.
We're gonna have to split.
No, I mean.
If it was supported, it'd be a good partner, but now it had to be endless.
I agree. I just, how do you, how do you?
And that's my.
Bring up amicably where things are clear.
Until we have a president, presented them or have something on the table with them that says, here's how you're going to take over.
Yeah, with our exit strategy.
I, I don't.
That's, yeah, yeah. What is our exit strategy? And even, obviously, I don't think they've thought about that either.
Because obviously, we, we don't want to sit on, on a building for twenty-four months or, you know, because I think the earliest they can vote now is September. So if September they vote, like you said, you, you're a long way around again before you reopen. And, and so we technically would have to be paying fifty percent for that.
Technically, though, guys, they'd have to purchase that building before they could do any bonding because if they don't own it, they can't renovate.
True.
You can't bond on something you don't own.
It's not yours.
I don't, I'm just saying though. We've got that. Well, to be honest.
You're right.
And that's when you say, at the time of the purchase agreement.
Here's our ninety days or you.
We're handing it to you, right? I mean.
And until they have a plan, because they don't even know exactly what monetary mount they want to bond for, they haven't decided if they want that six.
I still would just feel a whole lot better if it was voted in the minutes and they had something in writing of some sort, so that it was.
As long as it doesn't complicate it further, we're stubborn, uh-oh, because, well, now there's a way around that because you didn't specifically say that. You know, I.
I understand.
Okay, I will say this. It is in the minutes, because that was an official meeting, when you guys met out there, said it, this is what we're doing. So it's recorded, just hasn't had a five-member board vote on, we're terminating this.
Yeah. But, right, because we as a school board have decided that we're, and is that somewhere?
Yeah.
In our minutes?
That's in our.
All right, because then I took it to the pool board and said, no.
Well, it's in the pool board minutes, dude.
And it's in the pool board minutes too, and then the city.
So there's recording.
I mean, it was in this, it was in February's school board meetings, or meetings, minutes from that meeting.
Yes, correct. Yes, that we approved.
So there are references to that. I think with a board votes on something, it'll be to hand over that building and sell the building. And that's when the clock starts of.
I guess, but that, but that's my, but that's my point of why don't, do we need to initiate that part of the process of saying, we need to approach them and say, so.
Are you ready to initiate that though and say, listen, we, if we're gonna sell this to you, you have to purchase it by X. Is that what you want?
Or at least tell us your plan.
They don't have a plan.
Yeah, there is no plan.
If they had a plan.
Your plan to purchase, what is your plan to purchase?
I don't think they will if they don't build something.
I would agree to that, but how can they go through with any of the rest of it if they don't purchase?
Go ahead, Rob.
It's a catch twenty-two.
Say you're gonna buy, buy September first, and they say no, then we eat the full demo costs.
No, because the agreement's still in play because they haven't given us ninety days either. I mean, they're, they're, they're equally reciprocating in the agreement.
If you can get a demo team out there to take the building down in ninety days, I mean.
I think our best course of action is to keep thinking on this and see what steps they want to take. But I agree. I, I don't know what the.
Now, the, the problem they have is, and why I'm calling their bluff, I guess, in that regard, if that's the angle you want to look at, is if their plan, which it appears at the moment, is renovating and modifying, they don't want us to tear it down. So, so I don't think they want to taunt and say, no, you know, whatever.
No, I, I agree. I think at the end of the day, we just want to make sure that everyone knows we're on the same page with the city that we're saying we're moving in a different direction. They've been given ninety days notice because of what we're doing, and they can't come back and say, well, you didn't give us ninety-day notice based upon this.
Yes, that was where my thoughts are. Once that was brought up, that there's the agreement and the ninety days, I want it to be clear that we are phasing ourselves out of it.
And it, and it's, if the pool died altogether and it got torn down, obviously, it would terminate itself with no notice. But if they're going to continue it, then that's why I worry about the notice.
And that's where you tie it into, because you hold the cards as the person that, or the entity that owns that pool. If in fact, and I don't believe this would happen at all, if there was any hardball tactics on that side, let's say, well, we're going to not release this building until ninety days. I'm just saying, right? You hold the cards.
Yeah, because we own the building.
Right?
Yep.
You don't have to sell it. You can determine when you want that to sell. And if they're saying, well, we're gonna hold it for ninety days, well, we're gonna not sell it.
You do what part?
I wonder if you do need to talk to Brett just to talk through.
Exactly.
Just to let him know our situation.
And see if he has any.
Let me ask him that. Here's what I was thinking. Here's what I'm thinking.
Recommend somebody else to assist us.
Here's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
What if I send the agreement to Brett to review?
Yes.
Say, here's where we're at. It's currently shut down. The city's looking to possibly take this on. Is there anything in this agreement that we need to make sure we have duly noted? Or will this agreement be terminated after we sell that property?
Thank you.
Because then you can at least tell us if the agreement's gonna hold up. Is there a ninety-day thing in there or is it, is it gone? If, if the ninety-day thing doesn't matter, that's really the issue we're facing, correct?
Yes.
And it may be that we need a new agreement to get a smooth transition.
Correct.
That just lays out the intention.
But I will send him the agreement.
Correct.
Share where we're at and what his recommendation is, and I'll report back to you when I know. Is that?
Should, should we have an in-person meeting in, in April? Do you think that'd be enough time to have that information taken care of?
Soon as I hear anything from Brett, I can forward it. As a matter of fact, you know what I'll do, guys? I'll send an email to Brett and I'm gonna include the pool board members on that. And then you can, like, if you have questions, you'll be able to chime in. That sounds, like a plan, or, and he'll, you know, you, you can ask him directly, when do you think this will be available? What do you think? How should we handle this? How should we handle that? Because as board members, you have the ability to access Brett too. That's another reason. All right, I'll send an email to him.
And just so you know, we won't make it ninety days without doing another allocation. We've got enough money based off of what we spent this last month to get us through two more months. And then there's no more money and we'll have to do an allocation.
Okay.
And how do you build that in your budget, not knowing how that's gonna be for next year?
Yeah, because I, I have a penny thing in the budget. It's thrown out.
Right, because we know moving forward what, and what are the expenses for the pool? I mean, we all, we have insurance, we have electricity, um, yeah.
Yes, you have your, your insurance. And then we have our natural gas. There's gotta be something else to do.
Is Andy still making?
I don't know. It's gonna happen. We still have some.
I don't know. I don't want to answer.
And at one point, I talked, maybe there was an issue with the electrical service, but maybe that's been restored because it sounds like the city did.
Shoot him an email.
Two thousand, eleven hundred dollars.
Eleven hundred dollars a month?
Okay.
All right. Anyway, all right, we've got, we've got something else, but yeah.
Hey, but these are good conversations, guys.